I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Just want to remind everyone to please turn off their cell phones. So if they're not ringing during the meeting, we do have, these meetings are being recorded for those that can't make it here and stuff ringing in the background can get what you call, so that being said, during public comments, just we ask you to come up to the podium, just state where you live, doesn't need to be addressed, it could be Otisville, that's fine, or Mount Hope, or wherever else you live. There is a five minute limit for person for public participation. And that being said, I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven oh two P M. And can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the public hearing and regular meeting minutes of March seventh, two thousand twenty four?
We'll make the motion in a little bit.
Thank you, Brian.
Second.
Thank you, Bob. All in favor?
Alright.
Thank you. Correspondence, Christine.
The board members have received the draft copy of the March seventh, two thousand twenty four minutes of the public hearing and regular Board of Trustees meeting. On March eighteenth, two thousand twenty four, Village Clerk Christine Napolé received, received the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty five budget from Mayor Brian Carey. The proposed budget has been presented to the Board of Trustees this evening. On March eighth, I received proof of publication for the notice of election and public referendum that appeared in the timetable record on March fourth, two thousand and twenty four. We received Bank of New York Mellon statements for the month of February and the weeks of February twenty sixth, March fourth, and March eleventh. The village has received a proposed retainer agreement and resume from the law firm of Noah and Mentori L L P attorneys and counselors at law in regard to the position of planning board attorney. The information has been forwarded to the board members for review. I received the annual list of Village of Otisville firefighters who qualified for the annual service award payment this year, and that is on the agenda for this evening. On Thursday, March twenty first, I received an application from the Orange County Bombers softball team requesting use of Burgers Field for practice March through October, and there was within a letter explaining that they would like to use the field on Sundays for about three hours and possibly one night per week, which they would coordinate with the Little League. The board members have received a copy of the rates for Delta Dental Plan, which is being proposed as the new dental benefits for the D P W employees for their consideration this evening. The current plan is being retired at the end of this month. And board members have received a proposal for a new fire chief's vehicle emailed to them on March fifteenth by me, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Christine. Frank, I just want to say it's very nice to see you guys in your shirts, looks good. But go ahead, D P W report.
I just got a couple things, Johnny's got some stuff. Water report for February two thousand twenty four, the village's daily usage was forty-four thousand four hundred sixty-three. The state prison's daily usage was a hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred fifty-one. Starting next, next week, weather permitting, we'll be flushing hydrants, and Dr. Roder has been notified.
Alright, well, Frank was away, we had that big windstorm, we had one of the trees come down, we cleaned up. O N R owes us two cones, so they took our two cones and rolled away with them.
They need them.
Yep.
I'll see you later.
Alright, I'll be turning the water on at the ball fields on Monday, the eighth down there. We start cleaning up from the winter, starting sometime in April, we can have April here. Hopefully it doesn't snow again. And got, talked to the guy yesterday from Marshall's Equipment, our new side-by-side will be here next week.
Thanks, guys. Tenement Hope, Carrie, what do you got?
We're having a public hearing on Stormwater Law on April fifteenth. At our last meeting, we created and appointed the members to the Hudson Valley Sewer Advisory Committee. We are currently forming the Town Ethics Committee. If anybody's interested in joining, they need to email the town supervisor by this Friday, the twenty-second at four o'clock. We have an Easter hunt at the town park on Sunday at two o'clock. And then summer camp enrollment has been very slow this year, so April fifteenth, we don't have fifty kids, the program will be canceled. So if anybody's interested in enrolling, please do so as soon as possible.
Thanks, Carrie. What was the date? I'm sorry, April eight?
Summer camp, fifteenth, April fifteenth.
Texted. And how many do you need? I'm sorry.
Fifty.
Fifty.
How many do you have?
As of Monday, we have one.
Three. Isn't that quick, huh?
Yeah. We've been taking enrollment since January, so.
The sentence part about it is they have all the staff to run this.
This year?
Absolutely, they had it last year too. They have all the staff to run this as far as. Is there a way to prolong it?
Well, the problem is, we hired the staff last year, and then it was canceled, and they didn't have summer jobs, so we don't really want to put them in that same situation again this year.
What do you do?
And we have to hire the staff first, because in order to get our license, we have to have a director's in place. We don't really want to do that if people are done two years in a row.
Thank you. Kurt, have anything?
Just a reminder that officers will be out there for Stop D P W Y, fulfilling our grant. We not drink and drive.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Good boys.
Fire chief's report. Have anything to add, man?
Rob said he doesn't have anything at this time.
Trustee reports. Start with you, Bob. What you got?
I don't have a whole lot. Excuse me, the planning board had nothing on their agenda for March, so was anything going on except we're looking for a new lawyer.
He did come to the meeting for the record. Unfortunately, they didn't have a forum to have the meeting, and there was nothing on the agenda anyway, but.
It'll be next month.
Yes.
The historical society be having a spring open house. I think Nancy told me July fourth, I mean June fourth, but that's a Tuesday, so let me check with her, that may be wrong, it's beginning of June, but I don't think it's gonna be on a Tuesday. So let me check that, might be the second, but let me.
Ask her for a flyer if she has one yet.
Yeah. The old school community center, May twenty fourth, will be having a, like a grand opening slash open house. We'll have refreshments and stuff, will be more to come on that. And just a reminder, the summer concert series starts July second. We got some new bands, and spread the word. Get everybody out to it. I think that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Brian, what you got?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and being a part of the voting process Tuesday. Appreciate it. Hope everybody had a happy St. Patrick's Day. The only thing I really have, update on the fencing with Ketchum's down at the ball fields. They started that the other day. They're looking to have it finished by Saturday, but with the incoming weather, probably not going to be until Tuesday. The Little League was asking about the garbage bags again, for me guys, if there's a way to just drop them off when I turn the water on that way, not wasting trips.
No problem.
Small business, had a nice conversation with the new owners of Fourth Main, and a little bit with the hardware store, they're pretty excited to try and go over and figure out lock and figures.
Property lines.
Property lines, and move forward with that whole, whole thing. And besides that, I don't really know anything else.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Just, how did we make out talking to the owner of Mix about his parking lot? Have we?
I haven't seen it.
Okay, yeah, okay. So let me say this, I'll, I'll reach out to him, I have a contact through Facebook to reach out to him, I'll contact him for both of you guys, I guess. And, alright, you just spark my thing when you talk about small business down there. Okay, I'll, I'll get an answer. Lance, what do you got?
Not much, just, um, so the park, maybe no, we're gonna, I'm gonna make a meeting up for next month, and we'll get, um, the forest there, and one of the landscapers there to go over some cleaning, and Frank and John are in the park with the trees and all that, so not much going on. I know Frank, I bet me, and Diane can tell the garden dog. But I'll get together and get a date, and we'll all, and sit down and start the spring out on another happy new. Parks are open, come enjoy them, come join the Little League down there, the parks down there, and enjoy all the parks in the village. That's all I have.
Perfect. At some point, I want to get with you, Lance, to go down to the park also to talk about our event that's gonna happen for.
Yep.
We can talk, figure out a spot, get with Frank and John, and then also contact the tree company if we're gonna use the same tree company down there, not Florida. And if we want to get him up here to do anything as far as look at trees, we have suggested any suggestions for any future stuff, we can do that, because he made the offer, so we might as well take him up.
Yeah, some ones on the, on the back and, are in the way of the trail in case they fall down, so definitely, there's some that'll get the gold and pick up the ones that they can take and the ones that we can take down, and save them, save most one.
It's the weekend before, yeah. Okay, thanks, Lance. Diane?
Just before I start, the, you said about Mix and the parking lot? I don't, I, either I missed something or I forgot.
Oh, there was a hole in the parking lot, so we have concrete barriers around it right now at Mix.
But that's our property, right?
Correct. We're gonna contact Mix to find out if there was, they had anything on their survey map, tanks or something like that, before we go ahead and do anything further, so.
Yeah, okay.
I hate those concrete barriers, I hate looking at them, and I hate that they're back in the parking lot, different sections, so if I can make it faster, no, listen, that's, you're right, and I'm glad we didn't move them, they were still there, but unfortunately, they're taking up two parking spaces right now.
Just on back until midnight.
Well, you guys have, what do you call, wrapped all around, the wind didn't take any of that stuff, did it?
No, I know, I totally have them, don't check it.
If we get the two cones back from O N R, we can use those.
The window.
Alrighty, the streetlights. I'm working on identifying three streetlights to be upgraded. There was some discussion last time about maybe having like three in a row rather than spreading them out. Once I've gone through the full inventory, I'll make some recommendations, bring it to the board, and let you guys decide what you want to do. I'm looking into solutions for the resident complaint we had at one Lewis Street, don't have that just yet, that's still on the burner. The Z B A, I did talk to Maureen, the chairperson, about the fact that there would probably have to be a meeting night change based on the availability of the attorney, and she's gonna pull her board to get an idea of what nights they're most available.
The Z B A?
Yes.
There's no change to the Z B A, this is only on your board. Z B A already has their own separate attorney. So Z B A, no change. Did, did everyone, our current attorney for the Z B A is?
Mr. Remena.
And that hasn't changed.
Okay.
Yeah, this is only, Kelly's office would only be for planning.
Okay, I misunderstood you.
No, it's okay.
I thought it was for both.
That's okay. I, I, let me say this, I talked to Sally.
Yeah.
I know Sally only sent that out to the planning board, but I came to meet with the planning board, unfortunately, I didn't have a meeting, but I came to meet with them to kind of tell myself kind of what happened and why there was a change, but.
If the planning board changes to just hypothetically Wednesday, and the Z B A wanted to change because it, just for consistency, it's easier for people to remember, would that be okay?
Tell them to write a letter, we'll start as a board, listen, I don't.
I'll talk to her again.
Just to say this to you, when you say Wednesday, that's the day the planning board's choosing to, is Wednesday. So that's, that's the day that they would like their meetings at.
That makes me happy, because it, I think it's always worked well when the planning board met the same night that the building inspector was here, because they're a really good resource, where you can just run in and ask questions, so that's good, and I'll, I'll talk to Maureen more about it. Once again, I've said I'll mention it at every meeting, we do have vacancies on both the Z B A and the planning board for alternate members. While campaigning, there's a new resident who is gonna be getting in touch with you, Brian, we, I talked to him a little bit about it, he's very interested, he's young, exactly the kind of person that we want to get on board. And he happens to be living in Mayor Woman's old house, so I said, the mayor must be channeling the energy, saying, get involved. Recycling, I wanted to thank John, I know you went around and tagged the bags this time, and hopefully that will residents will now understand why, you know, what they can and they can't put out. And I did notice on the latest bill from the county that they accepted our recycling, so we're headed in the right direction, that's really good, thank you.
Just so you know, last Friday, recycling wasn't, because the dumpsters, people were mixing, you know, and you can't tell until you dump it.
Right.
So we gotta just try to remind people they can't.
Yeah, it's gonna happen once in a while, but if we can, certainly if we can get most of what people are setting out to the curb, and get them to only put the regular stuff out, we'll be in good shape, but I really, I didn't expect you to go around yourself and do it, and I know you did, so thank you very much. The only other thing I wanted to bring up, and this is for John and Frank to take a look at, Kate sent out the report for the electric consumption today. And we had talked a couple of meetings ago about Veterans Park and how high it was. Now, and at that time, there was some belief that it was because the door wasn't closing properly and that the hot air was escaping. There was a significant
Drop.
Change, but it's still three hundred dollars instead of fifty or sixty, so it's still way above normal.
Well, if that's, if the heaters are running
Right.
in down there, in, in, in the park room and in the bathrooms on a low setting, now that the weather has warmed up, well, it was February, we got locked these, so we'll check you, I know it usually drops, or.
Yeah, just, just really keep an eye on it, because like, just what I was really looking at was the average from last year and this year. Last year's average per month was ninety-seven dollars, and this year it's two hundred thirty-three, so.
Did you guys lock the bathroom doors?
Last year's, we, last year we winterized it.
Oh, well, that's it?
The only, the only heat
That's part of it then.
The only heat that was on was in the storage room.
Okay, then that, that makes the difference to me.
We'll do is check that report, figure out what we spent, and let's see going into next winter, this is gonna be a while, let's see going into next winter if it's more cost effective to get porta-johns at the park instead of opening in a bay or the park, let's just see if it is. Yeah, no, I, I get it, but we did open it up for the sleigh riding hill, and I know if our electric bill's going up, I mean, listen, I realize we budget for a certain amount, but when it's over budget and.
If there's a reason for it, that's, I just don't want it to be like that one time, where something was like really haywire with the hot water heater, I think, and.
Do we have a timer on our lights down there? Maybe we'll give them like a minute, if you can't go to the bathroom in a minute, you're out.
No, they're on it.
No, that was a joke.
They are on it, actually, they are, just those switches are.
I don't wanna, you want to turn the lights off, huh? No, okay.
The other thing on the report has to do with the village wells and the state well site.
Blink, blink.
I hadn't noticed this before, but again, looking at the average last year and the average this year. Last year, well, the village wells are using fifty-one percent more kilowatts monthly than they did a year ago. So that's a lot of kilowatts, and the state, what's it called?
Prison.
Station, the well station.
Bustapum?
Yeah, they're using twenty-five percent more than last year. Both of them spiked in July of this year, and they have stayed high the whole time. So, as I said last time, I've been going up about electric consumption to know what might possibly cause that, but it really seems peculiar that they both happened at the same time. We went from well, not even looking at the dollars, because debt doesn't always equate depending on, but it jumped at our well site, it jumped by about a thousand kilowatts each month. And then at the state, it jumped only, only about two hundred, no, what am I saying, two thousand. It jumped two thousand at the state.
That I can't understand.
Just think about it.
We haven't put in any new, I didn't put in more money.
It's usage, that one?
Yeah.
Usage for the, you know.
Yeah, well, that's what I said, I'm looking up, what I just quoted was usage kilowatts.
Is that pumping water to the prison? Because we want those inmates to shower longer, so there's more water, there's no question there. That's what it is, it's the amount of electricity pumping.
But you said that they've had some leaks up there, right? So if it was leaking in the.
The pumps are right.
Keeps running.
But as with that key heart, going running longer too.
Right, so there's. No, it hasn't gone down.
Hasn't gone down.
They consistently
Maybe heavily.
At fourteen thousand as opposed to thirteen thousand, and that's ours, and then.
We found the ten thousand gallons, so we fixed last year.
Right.
That was worth something, we found that one, that was keeping the pumps running, so.
Yes, and theirs went from, like I said, it was about eight thousand kilowatts, and it jumped to ten thousand, and it stayed at ten thousand the whole time.
Your pay raise, all our detective.
Well.
Don't know, just something to keep an eye on.
I'm curious.
Get on the case. What guy is that?
The two, the two well sites together is resulting in about two thousand dollars a month more than it was last year, so it does add up. That's all I have.
Thanks, Diane. Alright. Mayor's report. Seven point one, I was looking to talk myself here. I just want to thank Christine first and foremost for spending the entire day at Village Hall for elections.
Thank you.
I'm sure she was really happy that we changed our election time, but thank you.
You're welcome.
You were in good spirits when we left here, so that was good.
She's a little bit of a goshen.
I want to thank all the election workers that had come and spent the entire day, I get it, it's a long day. But I want to thank them, and also the person that came in and set the election machines up, and all the people that came out and voted. Forty-three people voted before twelve o'clock, so since we changed our hours, I just wanted to throw that out there, forty-three people were through the door before twelve o'clock. Lo Sap, in case anyone didn't see it, did pass a hundred and forty-four to thirty-seven, which I'm sure the volunteer firefighters over here in Otisville Firehouse were appreciative of that. Back on March eighth, the day after our last meeting, Orange County Mobile D M V was here, they had a total of twenty-four transactions, and I tried to get their transaction numbers just so I could report it. I do believe at some point, either later this week or the beginning of next week, Port service D M V is opening. I only know that because I have these really large pair of scissors for grand openings, and they called me to borrow them, so that's how I know where they're going. But the D M V bus will be back here on Friday, April twelfth, which I think I gave everyone, every time I try to print something, now I'm gonna try myself to put it in your mailbox too, but the flyers are up, it's online. This hasn't really been a huge hit, but COVID nineteen tests are available here, we had gotten a hundred from Orange County Department of Health, so if anyone, any residents would like them, come in during the day and pick some up at the front desk. Bob, you already hit on the summer concert series, which is great, look forward to that. I didn't really put anything, I did post it online, but I didn't put it out in constant contact, as we get a little closer, I'll send that out. Speaking about constant contact, I'll roll into this. Currently, we have two hundred and thirty contacts in there, and to break it down by village resident as compared to other, a hundred and twenty-nine of them are village residents. That's why we asked you to put your address in, and we will post all events to everyone, but stuff that happens for just village residents, water main break, emergency, something to that extent, those are the people that will, the village residents will get that. Brian, you hit on Afield. Yesterday, I guess the only other thing I have is yesterday, I got to attend a local government lobby day at the state Capitol. Kind of interesting to meet with some other people from other municipalities. This was the New York Conference of Mayors and also the Association of Towns. After it, we had gone over and spoke to our Assemblyman Carl Robinick, one of the big topics of conversation was to get more money to repair our roads. Every road you drive on obviously needs some sort of upgrade, especially the state roads with potholes everywhere, and that will lead me into my next thing that I learned yesterday. Phil, maybe you might be interested in this, since you had brought up about two eleven potholes at one point, I believe. New York State has a, it's called one eight hundred pothole. You can either call one eight hundred pothole and report potholes, which, or you can go on and go W W W yeah, eight hundred pothole, and it will bring you to their website, you can report it. So I learned that yesterday, don't know how quick they're gonna be, but hey, I guess every way counts possible. The nice part about this is, and I learned this is, is if someone's driving down the road and your car gets damaged from one of the potholes, and they go online and they report it, it gives you a feedback that you reported it, now they're on notice. So it's not like saying, you know, well, as an example, and I hate to use our roads, but I will. I saw Frank at Mix, and I told him there was a pothole on one of the streets, he didn't fix it, now my tire's flat. Well, that is technically notice, but my suggestion was be to tell Frank, and then maybe put it in a writing when you get home, or a call, or, or some way to document that or what, because insurance will cover it, it just needs to be reported in a documented manner. Last but not least, since I've only been talking for five minutes, by the way, last but not least, New York State also has what's called Projects in Your Neighborhood, this is kind of an interesting site. You can go on there, you can type in the county, and you can see all the roads that are going to be paved at some point in the future. So if it is on the plan for New York State to pave or to do upgrades on a road, you can see it before everyone else finds out about it. And that is, again, Projects in Your Neighborhood.
And that's the state roads?
That's state roads, yes, yes. I don't, why do they call them potholes? After they legalize marijuana in New York, I'm surprised they do call it potholes, but that's it. Okay, that being said, that's the end of my report, so let's bounce to audience participation again. Everyone's welcome to come up and speak, we just would like to limit you to five minutes, just state your name and where you live, so don't all, come up, whoever would like to come up to the podium, please.
Alright, I'm Maureen Brightfield, I live in the village of Otisville on Field Drive, and the reason why I I'm here tonight is because I emailed you back in December regarding the water. We have a well, and I may, our neighbor has a well, there's only two other residents that I know of in the village, maybe the water department knows something more, but we pay a water bill, and we do not use any of the village water, we've been here for thirty-two years. So far, we've spent, including this year, because I look back at what I, what I could find, estimated about thirty-five hundred dollars towards the water that we do not use. We have, actually, our well was struck by lightning, we got nothing for it, we had to pay the maintenance, we had to pay all the costs, we had to incur all those costs, and still paying for the residents of our community to get their water. So we're being charged for the cost of water that we don't use here. And it's just, now it's gone up again, it's gonna go up again, because as we know, the water mains in the village are very old. We just had the big thing with Wall Street breaking down, and I'm sure there's going to be. They're all pipe, so those things are gonna go up, and again, it's, but we're going to help to incur those costs again, we're going to absorb that, and it's just I mean, after all these years, it's, it's starting to get frustrating, because we're not getting anything for it, and I just, I know there's a law, I know, you know, we weren't told when we bought the house you're gonna have to pay water. We never were asked, and it, according to the, you know, the gallon used, it's zero. You use zero amount of water, your flat rate is eighty dollars, so if you use enough water, you're paying eighty dollars. It, three times a year, it used to be four times when we first started, and it might have been twenty dollars at the, at the, you know, back in nineteen ninety-two. So I just feel like, and our neighbor is here too, they're also one of the people that affect. There's nothing that we're getting for this, and it's just very frustrating. I, I don't know what other way to say that it's fair, and although, even if we pay the flat rate of a certain amount a year, and maybe that's a way, but it's still, it's gonna go up, and, and we're, we're retired, so we're living on a limited income. And I just wanted to see if there's anything that can be done to change it.
Fair enough.
Because the law has been the law before we even got here, we never had a chance to go on or have a say on it, and Jerry, they came after us, they never got a chance to have a say, and the other people. And the other people, I don't know them or ever gone and asked them to come to, to speak to this, but, so that's my thing.
No, listen, I, I gave, just so the board knows, um, I know you've been here in the past, I got a copy of the water law. As, as, as written, which I went and visited you and I gave it to you. We talked about this and I said, listen, this is a law that obviously does affect you, you are paying for.
Nothing.
You're paying the, the minimum, which unfortunately, and I'll say this.
But the minimum goes from zero to eight thousand dollars, it's not even, there's no choice.
Here's all I would say, and again, board, if you guys have comments, here's the only thing that I want to say. I did invite you to this meeting, I did want you to come, I don't know what legally we can do to it. And unfortunately, if you didn't notice, we're missing one key person from our meeting tonight, and that happens to be our attorney. Um, I haven't talked to him about this yet, other than that I was giving you a copy of the water law and obviously I believe he was here last time you were here. Um, I'm one person on a five-person board, so if anyone else has anything to say, feel free.
Is there a meter and everything?
No.
No.
They are not.
And that would be another thing, if we wanted to hook up to village water, we have to incur all of those costs. We have to pay for the we, meter, we have to, we have to, you know, pay for the piping, the valve, everything.
Because I was going to say, the only thing that reminds me of is like a hookup for the house with electricity. So if you decided to go solar, you're still paying Orange Rockland.
Correct.
Yes, we're, we're paying electric bills for our.
So that's what it sounds like.
It's part of being in the village.
Right.
That you took the choice of not taking the village's water.
No, we didn't, we never had to.
That's, that's.
We bought the house, the well was there.
All right.
We never had.
All right, so when you bought the house, that person that you bought it from had a choice to take in village water. And they decided, the village, and they decided to do their own well. But you're still within the village and you must pay for the service. Say that to my son with a private school, I don't use Minnesota, I still have to pay taxes to Minnesota. Because it's your choice and it was that builder's choice, not the hookup.
Well, it's still, it wasn't.
Let, let me just say this to both of you. This, this, you, you guys are bringing something up that probably happened long before any of us got on the board.
Right, right, yeah.
And, and, and clearly, I think what really, in my mind, talking to you guys, what really sparked this was water bills went up. I mean, it went up, like, we sat down, we obviously have bills to incur, it went up. Learning that, there's four people in the village that I believe, there's four, am I correct about that, am I, when I say that? Okay, there's four people affected by this. Now, at any point, at any time, any of the people that are on a, currently and they're on a well can call Village Hall and say, right, and say, I want to hook up to this. Okay, just so we're all on the same page. There is fees and everything else included in that, clearly we're not just going to give a meter and whatever other, and that's exactly what you're talking about. So this is something that again, unfortunately, we're going to have to prolong until we talk to the attorney. I don't know what we can do as a board to change that. I would imagine that the local, I believe it was a local law that I gave, you gave me a copy of and that I gave. Obviously, as a board, we have the ability to change a local law. There's four people affected by this. Now, some, I believe you were also told at one point that this is for fire hydrants on your, okay.
Originally, we came down to the village when we first built and we were told that because the fire hydrant goes by our house. And if we ever had a house fire, that wa, village water would be used to put the fire out in our house. But we also pay taxes to.
For fire.
The fire department, so.
No, go ahead, John, go ahead.
True, but the people that live outside, that was fire chiefhood, but you honor fire insurance, you need deduction in your fire insurance. If you're not, you need to call your fire insurance.
We brought that up last.
Because you have access. Where people found out, they don't. So when you pay your fire taxes, none of that goes towards the water system. The hydrants and all that come out of the water budget. That's part of the reason why I was always told everybody got to incur that to pay for maintaining the hydrants and the water main. But you do get a break on your fire insurance because of the hydrants being inside the house.
Yeah, your homeowner's insurance, one of, you know, the things that they go down is how, what's your proximity to a fire hydrant?
It's across the street.
And yours, your, just like me, it's across the street, which significantly lowers your homeowner's rate. So you aren't getting some benefit, although it's, it's kind of like in a cloud, you don't realize that it's there.
It would, I would look into that, it's supposed to, and the village ISO rating is a little, a couple points lower than the town, I hope, because of the hydrants.
Let me, let me just say this to you. I thank you for coming, I thank you for bringing this up, because it's important, if you guys have something, you should, that, the door's always open here, right? You come, you speak about it, I don't know, I don't know and I don't want to comment on what we can do legally. So what I would like to do with your information is talk to our attorney about it. Let me get his info, let, let me have him talk to the board about this. And as soon as we get his information from him, fine. If I don't hear or if I, if I can't get information by the April eighth, our meetings are moving to Monday starting next month. April eighth will be our first board meeting, we will go into an executive session at the end of the meeting and I will talk to him about it. I'm sure I'm going to get an answer, but I want him to talk to the whole board, not just me, and I'm, I don't want him to talk to just me and then talk to you, because everyone here should be notified of it. So I do thank you for bringing it down, I am, honestly, I don't know what we can do, but I'm going to find out what we can do. If there is something to do, and then if there is something that we can do, talk to the board if they want to change it. That's the key part here, like, listen, I might have the idea I want to change it tomorrow, Brian might have the idea he doesn't want to change it, let, you know what I mean? So that, let, let us dig into this a little farther and uh, I thank you for bringing it. If, if, if your neighbor would like to speak, you're more than welcome to.
Nah, I'm, I'm.
I understand you're in the same predicament, I do, and I appreciate you coming out here to obviously, you know, to support your neighbor and to talk about it too. I just don't know what we can do for you and I want to find that out, is that fair enough?
We're like everybody else, you know, you're paying for something you're not getting, it kind of like rubs you the wrong way, you know, so.
Because everything's in the village favor and there's nothing for, for us, really.
We just need an answer, that's all.
Well, unlike John said, I have no idea what that percentage is, but it certainly would be worth calling to the insurance and ask them. You know, you may find out that it's, it's practically a wash and then at least you'd feel a little bit better about what you were paying for.
Okay, all right, fair enough, thank you.
Thank both of you, thank you. Anyone else, audience participation. Phil, come on up.
Phil Adamson, Otisville Sanatorium Avenue. Um, I wanted to publicly thank quite a few individuals for giving donations to the hardware for the banner. Did good, and I want to specifically uh, compliment some nonprofit organizations that helped us. And that is the Non-Nights Motorcycle Club of Orange County, the Mount Hope Historical Society, and the Otisville Fire Company. It's nice when a nonprofit helps another nonprofit out, since none of us have any means, so, thank you.
I have a question, hold on, it's not that simple.
I don't think you got one from the little league, I didn't.
How, okay, so I don't, I don't want to know how much they donated, no, 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 here's all I want to know. What is your ultimate goal to raise?
Enough to cover all the hardware.
Which is approximately what?
Five thousand.
Okay, five thousand.
Approximately.
I'm going to ask this way, are you halfway to your goal?
We're getting there, we're doing fine.
So you're almost halfway to your goal?
We're doing fine.
Okay, if anyone would like to, I just want to put it out there, mind you, the ten or twelve people that are here, there is people that do watch this, obviously. The majority of people that watch our meetings are online. Um, anyone would like to make a donation towards the hardware and this is for, go ahead.
It's not what I'm here for.
I know that.
I'm here to thank the people that did, and that's, I'm not looking.
I understand that, I'm just asking the question, so I'm bringing it up.
You'll take it, right?
If you would like, if you would like to make a donation, Phil is your guy. He didn't say what address he lives in, sanatorium, but if you drive down, you'll probably see him outside, fair enough?
Fair enough.
All right.
Phil, before you sit down. As you, and when the mayor asked, like, how far, how close are you to your goal? I immediately got this picture of, you know, those thermometer things you see, and, and, you know, you're very handy, so you could, you could do this. Make one of those that you can paint it up and I'm sure that there's somewhere in the village that we can find a putback. So think about it.
But I'm really not here looking.
We know that, we know that.
We could, we could solicit for you, we can't for ourselves.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you, everyone that donated. Anyone else, audience participation? Come on up.
Mary Beth Verzetta, Otisville. Just a reminder, this Sunday from seven AM to noon at the Pocatello Fire Department House, we are doing tenant grievance with Eve Easterbody. It is a fundraiser for the fire company because we are hosting the county parade this year, thank you.
Thank you, all right. Anyone else?
I just have one but today for Bob, for, for Bob. The, um, historical society open house is June second, twelve to three thirty.
That makes a lot more sense, it's on a weekend. All right, thank you, Karen.
Thanks, you're welcome. Okay, last call. Um, let's go for old business. Uh, border renovations, uh, as I said last time, I guess I'm going to say the same thing this time. Um, I have two, I'm still waiting on two, no, I'm still waiting on two more. Um, I just want to move this to our next meeting to old business, so let's not talk anymore about that. Um, people are a little slow to type these in, um. Yeah, uh, fire department, pole barn, um, advertisement for bids, you guys should have gotten.
No, they did not, I have them here, but there are two little typos in them and I will give them to you a lot. I was thinking about something after this, I didn't send them out. You cannot share these with anybody until we advertise for bids, okay?
So should we get these?
You can have them, but you can't share them, and when we do advertise for bids, you can't give them to anybody, it has to go through me. Okay, so I just wanted to, to explain that to you.
We don't ordinarily get a package for that reason, right?
But you can look at, you can view it, usually they're huge packets and they cost us fifty dollars a piece. So they'll, they're usually in the room where you can view them, so you can view these. I did it, I did it, yes, and we're also waiting for, we're, we're waiting for Rory, sorry, sorry, I didn't mean to ruin you out. Um, I want Rory to review it too. So what I would like you guys to do is approve to advertise it starting on March twenty-third. Because I think if I call the record, if I use the other record card, that would be the first day they could get in. And then, um, with the bid opening on April third. And this way it would give us time before the advertising goes out for Rory hopefully to have a look at it.
Well, let me just add this part about Rory, because I spoke to him today, and I don't want to say too much, but I'll just say this. He's not here for good reason and I'm going to call it health reasons, I'm going to add it to that. Um, he will be calling tomorrow, if not yet tomorrow, um, he will be calling in the meeting committee to talk to him about it. I did speak to him today, but uh, I'll talk to you about it when we're done with him, just so I'm not bringing up anyone's personal stuff.
Of course.
Um, if there's any spelling corrections or any other changes that need to be made, we'll make them.
Yes, those are, they're all minor things as far as I know. I asked Diane to um, help me with some proofreading takes, I'm never going to proofread my own things, so. They're all just little tiny spelling errors, I have to put my phone number on in here, but um, with the, but then anything, you know, I am more concerned about what Rory has to say as far as the legal part of it.
So you need a?
A motion, can we, can you do a board resolution to advertise for bids? Um, for the fire department pole barn beginning on Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, with a bid opening to be held on Wednesday, April third, two thousand twenty-four, at eleven AM at the Village Hall. Is that good for that one?
Yep, perfect. So I guess we'll do this two ways, so can I get a motion?
Make a motion to go over the bid process?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's just do a roll call, always on my shoulder telling me this, Bob?
Yes.
Brian? Lance?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
But I have to, um, yes, also, okay. Um, public hearing on proposed local law number one. Twenty twenty-four local law established the maximum weight limits for vehicles on village streets and roadways within the village of Otisville. Um, little problem with this, if this sounds like an echo from the last meeting. Um, the problem was, uh, we need to hold another public hearing on this because the time-stowed record did not run our public notice as scheduled. We learned about this after the fact, so since the signs aren't ordered, since the signs are, well, there are, we're trying to, but since that process is still happening. Um, let's just, we need to set a date for this, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so our next meeting, so. Um, can I get a motion to set a public hearing for local law, uh, number one? Um, that is the twenty twenty-four local law establishing the maximum weight limits for vehicles on all village streets and roadways within the village of Otisville. So can I get a motion on that?
What is the date?
Oh, April eight, April eight.
I'll make the motion for local law number one on April eight.
Thank you, Brian.
On second.
Thank you, Lance, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, Bob?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Yes, okay, we're all good. Um, an RFQ for engineering firm for facilitating grant funding. Now, this is, this is on the Delaware Engineering, correct? Okay, so, uh, if everyone recalls, we put this out, uh, how many bids did we get back?
One.
One, one bid, okay, well, one's better than none. Um, what is our next step to do with this?
Um, I would say you're going to do a resolution to contract with Delaware Engineering, um.
This is, this is kind of impressive, all these nice, right?
I actually didn't mean to do it in color.
No, that's right, that's right. Um, so can I get a?
How much is it?
Uh, I believe this was for the thirty-five thousand dollars to have them come up with all of the engineering part for us to apply for that grant. Which, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I hope, um, if we're, if we get the grant, we can obviously put that thirty-five thousand dollars into the grant to try to get that, obviously, to recoup that.
Well, and I think if I understood them correctly, it, they will try to explore any grants that we have, not just the one.
Any, any, yes, yes. The more the merrier.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, yes. Okay, so, yes. Can I get a motion for an RFQ for an engineering firm to facilitate grant funding, is that correct?
No, we want it, we want to, um, a board resol, a resolution to, um, contract with Delaware Engineering.
Then let's use Christine's words.
For the facilities grant.
Not my words, okay.
And, and allow them. To sign that contract.
And authorize the man to sign that, just to have, yeah.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Lance.
Second.
Thank you, Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's just do a roll call on this, Bob?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving right along, uh, new business, who, moving right along in the new business. Uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget, I'd like to set a public hearing. Um, I know you got a copy of this tonight, but uh, it's definitely come a little bit farther than when you guys had our last meeting. Um, you can look at some numbers, um, again, I thank Christine for, I don't hear the word budget for a while, I'm going to be happy. But uh, I thank her for all her involvement, for putting up with me, putting up with you guys and whatever else. So that being said, can I get a motion to set, um, a public hearing for our twenty twenty-five, um, budget?
Do you want to have it for today night as the other ones?
April eighth, let's make it seven oh two PM, or however you want to do it, if you want to break it.
Immediately following the first one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
I'll make the motion for that.
Thank you, Brian, thank you, Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, Lo Sap, or twenty twenty-three Lo Sap Award Resolution.
I will read that for you if you'd like, so I just want to get your. I'm sorry, I thought it was in order.
Is it in with the bills?
No, you have it in here, I just think I put something in front of it, um.
Do you want to take an intermission for a little while, Christine?
Here it is, I'm sorry, so many things, so many things, okay. And, and these are the congratulations to all of these firefighters, these are the firefighters this year who earned enough, um, service award points to receive their service credit for this year. Or their, their award for this year. By resolution of the Village of Otisville Board of Trustees, the two thousand twenty-three service listing of all qualified volunteer firefighters, the Otisville Volunteer Fire Department has been approved as follows. Andre Masari, Anthony Capola, Anthony, Antoinette Capola, Antonio Hernandez, Lays Vandermark, Daryl Vandermark, Diane Capola. Jordan Porter, Melissa Masari, Nina Masari, Rayanna Vandermark, Robert Bennett, Robert Capola, Samantha Vandermark. Sean Elser and Ty Sean Morris. The resolution was passed at regular meeting of the Village of Otisville Board of Trustees.
Seventeen total?
Seventeen, I think it was this year, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Yeah, I thought it was seventeen too, but you just said red sixteen.
I only got sixteen, right? I thought you said seventeen, but.
Okay.
Take my name.
Take what?
Take my name.
Seventeen, okay.
Anthony Paul Jr.
Senior.
Senior.
Senior, um, junior.
What do you need for that?
Resolution.
A resolution, okay.
Roll call, roll, roll.
Okay.
A motion, yeah, I'm sorry.
I got a motion. To pass the resolution to pay the 2023 LoSeP Award as presented.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're just gonna do a roll call on this so we know. Bob?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Okay. Planning Board Attorney, what did you give these guys for the Planning Board Attorney?
I gave them the resume.
Is it a sheet? Yep.
And the proposed.
Amount. Okay, so we've had, so.
The proposed, yeah.
On the resume, it listed all the other municipalities that this particular, okay, okay. Just, all I wanna add to this, and then we're gonna, what do you call it? All I wanna add to this is I came in, talked to the planning board, I did talk to Sally. Sally actually has a relationship already for the other municipality that she's working for with, with this firm, which worked out great. The relationship's already there. She kinda did a little talking at the couple people, the two people that were at the planning board, but I did ask her to put something out. So therefore, I would like to get a motion to hire, let's see here, what is this? The new planning board attorney, and I don't have the name in front of me. This would be their first board meeting in April, which would be Wednesday, first Wednesday of April, this.
Even though they identified the person who would primarily be our person, are we actually hiring the firm?
Yes.
Yeah, not the individual.
Not the individual, right. Yep, yeah. Thank you. I, yes, I just wanna make sure they got this, because I think the important part of what I had written on here besides the background is all the other municipalities. Like, we talk about bringing some knowledge and our planning board will definitely be a little more knowledgeable, I think that. This firm was also, how we even got it was, was recommended by our current attorney, Rory. He's the one that made the introduction to me for it, so. That being said, can I get, I'm sorry, I just handed that to you. Can I get a motion to hire the Law Office of Norton and Torrey for our planning board? And this would be starting next month.
And to authorize you to sign the.
And to authorize me to sign the retainer for it.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
You can have it. Again. All right, moving right along. Fire Department Chief's vehicle. Rob, Fire Chief, had given me some information on a chief's car. Kind of how that differed was he had given it to me a while back. We talked about it, but it didn't go any farther. The information that he got was actually from a company in Albany, a dealership up in Albany. That was for a 2023 model. We have since found a 2024 model. I believe it's almost $150 cheaper through this company. It's a Pennsylvania company. Called, worked out what we needed to work out with them, figured out, obviously, this isn't the fire department budget. That being said, if anyone has any questions, I don't know that I can answer them all, but I'm more than willing to.
So that, this that we have in front of us now isn't the same as what you emailed, correct?
I thought it was.
Because what you emailed was different vehi, like, different vehicles, not all Tahoe.
Let me, let me say this, the two vehicles that were from, what's the name of this dealership?
Austin's Click Lewis.
That's the Albany one, yeah. Yeah.
No, Click Lewis is one of Pennsylvania.
Yeah, Click Lewis is, no.
The Ohio one in Albany.
Yeah, it was a different, so there was two bids from this company for two different Tahos. One of them was a police package, one of them is not a police package. And the reason that we kind of chose the police package is because of the suspension. So in that email that he had sent me, there might have been two in there, and that's the difference, that might be the difference between the two. But I don't believe that I even forwarded you the Albany company app. It was a Chevy dealership. I don't believe I even forwarded that to you.
Yeah.
I never saw this before.
Yeah, this is the first time.
Okay, well, let me say this, if you guys did your research on the other one, this is the exact same vehicle, police package as the one from the Chevy dealership in Albany. It's, this is a 2024 model, that was a 2023 model. That's the differences. The cost, the cost between the two was a state bid price, and I believe, like I said, this one is almost $100 and something dollars cheaper than a 2023 version.
Where in Pennsylvania are they?
Ooh, that's, you know what, hold on.
Because my thought even when Albany was, you know, one of the advantages we always had in dealing with Robert Greene is that if the car had to go back, it was just an hour or so away.
Well, if the car has to go back, any dealership would obviously service it. It would have to go back to the dealership, yeah. Yeah, Robert, Robert Greene would definitely service our Chevy vehicles.
I don't be hat, not be hat needing.
Sure about that?
Oh, positive about that.
Okay.
I buy my cars all over the place, and I go to Port Charles Auto Mall or Sureski's, yeah. If they're not, I'm honestly not even a concern, because any dealership is gonna take it. And we have the closest Chevy dealership is probably Robert Greene or something like that.
He would leave a warranty to go to that.
What I talked to Rob about was basically, once the new vehicle comes in, we're gonna take an old vehicle, put it on Oxygen International, kinda like what we did with DPW, sell it. Put it, right, put it back in, and then next year probably look at something a little different than this. Maybe kinda like what you guys did in the past for the.
I'm saying the amount of money spent on repairs this year.
It's, yeah, there's, there's two of them that really need to come out of the fleet. They're past like the 10 or 12-year mark of, yeah.
So we just, we're just going with the two? Is he getting a third option or no?
The two what?
Vehicles, the 2023 and 2024?
Let me say this, a state bid price is a state bid price, so you don't need to.
He doesn't wanna look at a different manufacturer, okay?
No, no. Already, listen, we want, if I talk, if I talk any vehicle again, I want, in, in, in the original email that he sent me, I said, why are you sending me a maroon? And you can't tell because it's black and white. I said, why would we be getting a maroon? And he goes, no, it's, if you go through, you'll see the color, it's just the picture that's on it. Okay. I'd like to get a motion to purchase a new Fire Department Chief's vehicle.
From this place?
From this place, yeah, which is the, hold on, it's a 2024 Tahoe. As discussed with the police package suspension to not exceed, and I believe, does someone have the price up?
Fifty-four, one eighty-seven.
Yeah, not fifty-five.
Fifty-four, one eighty-seven.
Fifty-four, one eighty-seven.
Well, they're giving an exact. I was rounding it to fifty.
Can I get a motion?
Is this coming out of the reserve?
They would want to take it out of the reserve.
So we'll need to do that.
Yeah, and, and.
This first and then.
Make a motion.
Okay.
Yep, okay, go ahead. Anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to start the process of purchasing a new chief vehicle.
Perfect, thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to take the money from, this would, the money would be coming out of the Fire Department's reserve fund to purchase this vehicle. And to add to that, do they have the cost of what the lights were? Did we get that?
That's in the, that's been budgeted for, and then 2025 operating budget.
Okay, so this is just to move money for this vehicle from the reserves.
From the truck reserve?
From the truck reserve, yes. Can I get a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Thank you. All in favor? All right, okay. We have to schedule an annual reorganization meeting. Okay.
Do you want to have the first meeting, April?
First meeting of April. Sure.
It's gonna be a long day.
It's gonna be a long day.
Well, listen, a reorg meeting is gonna be long, because we're just gonna read through the list of people. I mean, it's not.
Before the meeting?
I'm gonna have Christine read, so you don't have to hear me. No, let's just do it right at the meeting. I promise, if we have to stay a little longer.
Yeah, we need to do public hearings, and we do the reorganization, and we do the regular meetings. But the reorg meeting is different.
Sorry.
Okay, you didn't, you didn't give me that option last year, by the way. I was just saying, all right. So I would like to get a motion to schedule our annual reorg meeting for Monday, April 8th.
Immediately following the two public hearings.
Immediately, that's fine. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay, moving right along. Union Dental Plan needs to be approved for the new plan. Okay, so obviously, we heard that the dental plan is ending next month, this month?
Um, it expires, it'll be ended this month.
Okay, so, so everyone has great teeth, and we stay that way, and we do better, or whatever else we need to do. Delta Dental was the plan that you were given information on. So if you have any questions, did anyone have any questions on Delta Dental?
Yes. Actually, Lance and I talked about it before the meeting. We were comparing the essential option and the traditional option. And there really is minimal difference between the two. On a couple of the things, they pay 80%, instead of 50%. But the, the maximum coverage is higher than what they have now. So that sort of kinda balances it out. It still would be more than what we're paying now, but it wouldn't be double, which is what the other one would be. So my feeling was if we went with the essential option, and we talked about it, and I said, my personal feeling is, if down the road we felt this wasn't working, and we wanted to go back to them and say, we wanna upgrade, I, I don't own an insurance company in the world, who'd be like, yep.
What do the town guys have? You guys talked to them. Town not open up to this, why was it whether, Delta?
I'm not sure exactly what they have. I know things are dr, traditional.
Okay, traditional.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what you guys talked about?
That's what we talked about, that's when we.
Okay. Christine, what did you figure out into the budget?
I figured it with the traditional in the budget. It would be, can I see this for a second? So compared to the plan that we currently have that's being retired, it would be a total difference of $1,158.27 annually. After, that's after the guys prepare deduction in, their payroll deduction in.
Eighty, eighty-one.
Yes, it is, because the original plan, the plan they have right now is $67.14 per family. And this one would be going up to $112.24 for a family plan. The essential option that Diane was talking about would be $83.02 for a family plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, eighty-three.
The one difference with this too is this, which our old plan doesn't water, offers an employee and spouse plan. So like Frank, for instance, would be an employee plus spouse, which is $73.76 as opposed to the family plan.
All right, so let me ask you guys this. I just have a question for you. Obviously, next year is when your union contract is negotiated. Are you guys comfortable with keeping what you currently have planned with tradition? And then if something changes as you use it, we go next year into talking about it? Are you all right with that?
Yeah, we can discuss that next week too.
Well, so just to let the board know, I have a meeting with John and Mike, their union rep, next Wednesday, two o'clock.
Wednesday is the third.
Wednesday, they're at two o'clock. There's a couple things that we're gonna talk about. One being what you guys currently are paying as compared to what we'd like to see you guys brought up in the, in the negotiation part. So if, if, and I'm just gonna say this, I'm not affected by this. I don't think anyone on this board is. The only people that are affected by this is the three of you. Okay. If you're all right with leaving it as is, and you want to test it, and you want to see, and you wanna come back and say, you know what? The better plan is the better plan. If you're all right with that, I'm all right with that. Are you guys all right with that?
No.
To go to the pro, you're talking about.
What planner, did you figure this out?
Essential is.
Essential is what Diane and Lance are proposing. Traditional is what.
Right.
John believes that the town has.
Right. And that's what you figured out, the budget that you handed out to everyone tonight, tradition, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Now, can I ask you about them? The difference between the two is about $30 a month. Times four people would be a hundred and twenty a month.
Well, no, because right now, currently, we, we would have out of the four, two family plans, an employee plus spouse, and a single.
Because that's, I was looking if they were all family. If they were all family, the difference between those two plans would be, just the difference would be more than what you're saying, so.
And also, the newer guys do pay 25% of their dental.
Right.
Okay, so that being said, we're not gonna push this, because obviously, we don't want this to end. So that being said, I would like to get a motion on this Union Dental Plan. If you guys wanna change it, you're more than welcome to do that, but I would like to get a motion, and let's just see if this passes for the current traditional plan that you guys figured into the budget that was handed to everyone tonight. I'd like to get a motion to.
So this is already figured into the budget?
Well, that, I think that's the highest.
At the.
It's the highest.
At the traditional plan, which is on this budget right here.
Or we go down and, ready to save it, come back to us.
So that being said, I'm gonna read this again. I'd like to get a motion for the Union Dental Plan for approval for Dental, Del, Delta Dental Traditional Plan PPO. Anyone wanna make that motion?
But there is no move enough from that. That's what I was, when you were asking them, would you be okay taking this and then moving up if we, it didn't work?
This is the highest?
No, well, no, the more, more active, but.
No, there's. There's a higher.
But, but that's just the comprehensive standard.
I'm just trying to get them dental, so they're covered. And then when we go into union negotiation and sit down, then we can talk about something different. If you wanna bring something to the table different, that's fine. I'm just trying to pass this so they have dental when we walk out of here.
Sure, and they would with the essentials, is what I'm saying. And it, it really, I think it's comparable to what they have, but.
I'm just looking back here, they cover 50% of basic as opposed to 80% of traditional. And I'm looking at some of those things, and it's.
Yeah, there's, there's.
Quite a big difference.
There's four areas where they cover 50, where the one covers 80, not 50. Two of them are periodontics.
Oral surgery.
And then oral surgery.
The deductibles are higher too.
What's that?
The deductibles are higher on the essential as opposed to the traditional.
I think there are no deductibles. Isn't that what Christine said?
Says it down there, $150.
No, there are. You were looking at that in there. The deductibles were higher, that's where you were.
Oh, definitely, yes.
It was the ad hoc, it was the maximum annual that we were, maximum ad hoc, if there isn't any.
Okay.
Are we ready to vote for this? Or you guys wanna change something? You tell me.
No, it looks like, I mean, looking at all of that, kinda almost looks like traditional is a little bit better.
I would probably say.
Of course, because you're paying more.
You pay more.
Yeah, I mean.
Now, with the deductible, that's per visit? Is that, that must be what that is.
Yeah.
No, usually a deductible, isn't a deductible usually, like a copay per visit, you have to deductible, is like you have to spend that much.
If they're just, you have to.
Right. Copay deductible, you have to. You spend that much money before you get paid.
Okay, so it, so the difference there would really be, if you look at the high end with the family, it would be seventy-five dollars a year.
What's the writing called? Traditional and what's the other one?
Essential.
Essential.
Okay. Okay, let's, let's.
It's budgeted for the traditional too.
Let's, let's try this again. Can I get a motion for as written here to, for the, or for the Delta Dental Traditional Plan PPO? Can I get a motion to pass that to let these guys have that plan? I'm gonna, we're just five minutes.
I'll make the motion right now, after all the different research and talking, I think.
Thank you.
Make the motion for the traditional option.
Can I get a second on that?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Now, you're going back next week.
Hold on. Hold on. Bob?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
Diane?
I will vote yes, because I know we're under a time crunch, but I really think that.
I'm not trying to force anyone to vote here for the record.
That it would have been good if we'd had this to discuss ahead of time.
Okay, fair enough. That's a fair statement.
And they have done.
Application for the use of village property for Burger Field from the OC, who was this, the Bombers?
Bombers.
Yeah, looking to use the field primarily on Sundays and one night per week, which they will coordinate with the Little League. Now, I just have one question about that before I ask for a motion. To coordinate at night, this is obviously during daylight, correct? Is that fair to say? I'm only asking you, because you're the closest I can get.
The last time we ran into this, it was, yeah, because everybody's working for the most part, so it's like.
Okay. If there's a use for lights, I'd like to have that conversation, that's all I'm saying.
Dylan?
I think one time it is.
Okay.
I think if, if we can put that into what we approve.
Yeah, if they need lights, they need to come back and ask.
It's only during, yeah, daylight.
Were they charged anything?
It shouldn't be. They just haven't given us an insurance certificate, Karen.
Um, well, this is the thing, I did find this in the, I, I found this in the Little League folders from before. The Little, well, the Little League is waiting. This is for other, um, other entities using it. There's, there's actually a checklist that we're supposed to be using, the cleanup checklist, that we need to get to them. But also, it does say here, that if the application is approved, the group will be notified that a non-accumbable fee of twenty dollars per day is due. And there's security deposit amount of two fifty would be due. The last time I remember doing something like this was, I remember with the youth football, because they didn't know when they were gonna use it. They would, it was kinda like on their honor, and they'd feed us at the end for how many days they used it. So that's up to you guys.
Okay, I'll say this. I would have loved to have known this before this, but since I don't know that, is a twenty dollars a fair amount to charge for a field? I don't know. If you wanna keep it at twenty dollars, if you wanna up it, let's talk about it, but obviously, they're looking for some sort of approval. My only concern about this is not so much charging them, but if we have to, and that's how we've done it in the past, so be it. I just wanna make sure if they need lights, that they put that in writing and bring it back to us. Not sort of calling and asking, hey, can John come down and turn the lights on, because I definitely think there should be a fee involved in turning the lights on, especially since electricity, we just got done with this conversation, is not the cheapest. So is everyone okay with twenty dollars?
No.
No?
With all that, with all that being said, how are you actually gonna, if something did happen? I get, oh, it's just for usage, or is it for damage?
No, usage.
Yeah.
The damage insurance gonna come.
Yeah. I'm just saying lights, I'm just saying.
The twenty dollars was talked about way back when, you know, for bathroom supplies, for picking up the garbage, for doing all that.
I was thinking it was for damage, and I was like, yeah, I approve that, and Little League's on there all the time, but.
Well, there is a checklist, which this I got in the Little League, uh, goes back to when there was some issues with people, that there should be a checklist that somebody from, I think, the Little League, right?
No, actually, it's supposed to be somebody from, the Little League, I think, said, we'll take care of it.
Right, we worked out.
But we, but it had been us who had to do that.
It would be Little League, they don't own it, we own it.
Well, no, because it.
They don't, they don't.
I don't know.
Years, years ago, we worked out a thing with the garbage and everything, the Little League would take care of all the garbage. If you guys got some garbage cans, we would take care of cleaning up all the compound, to make it easier.
So I didn't wanna go forward with this, since we're going everyone in the audience with our dental issues and our.
This is, this is the local team here, and they are, all, yeah, they're all Otisville.
Oh, well, that's, that's a difference.
For the most part, they're, it's an Otisville coach.
Okay.
Trying to expand the Otisville name with this travel team, so I mean, I don't, I'm gonna abstain from whatever you guys decide, just because I, I know them, I know what they're all about, so I'm not gonna get involved, but.
Well, as Christine said, you know, when the youth football was used, and yet we charged them, I, I mean, it's an established thing, I.
Twenty dollars a day is nothing, it's nothing.
All right, I'm gonna put this out, if you guys.
But a little bit extra for the supplies.
If you guys don't wanna vote this, so be it, we'll put something else out, but I would like a motion to waive the fee of twenty dollars every time they use it, to get an insurance certificate for any damage done to our fields. This is a park, this is people that live here. I understand it's other people coming here also, but in this particular case, since we're not reading it off of a piece of paper, since we have someone on our board that obviously is a little knowledgeable about who the OC Bombers are, I would like to waive the fee and get an insurance certificate from them, and that's it.
Definitely an insurance.
That's it.
Well, I.
So can I get a motion for that?
I understand what you're saying.
Go ahead.
That this is, it's local people, but then, wouldn't that extrapolate out into saying that if a resident wants to use Veterans Park, they shouldn't be charged, because they're residents? You know, you've gotta, you've gotta have some fees established in order to cover your maintenance, that's the whole point.
If no one wants to pass that motion, that's fine with me, okay?
That's what I'm saying, I understand where she's coming to, that's why I was like.
Bob, what do you got? What do you wanna add to this? What do you wanna do here?
Personally, I don't have any problem using it, and in this case, depending on the board's discretion, I wouldn't have any problem waiving the fees.
Okay. Lance, how do you feel?
Well, I do a thing in the park, and my fee is waived, as long as no damage. Shouldn't be a problem, they gotta come with an insurance card. I understand we had a fee for such thing as garbage bags, but no matter what, we got the garbage bags down here, so it's not, we're not gonna run away and buy extra bags. I think they can, they can police themselves by, do what this will go down here.
Okay, fair enough. Diane?
Obviously, I'm not in favor of waiving the fee, because I think we have an established procedure, and I think we should follow it, but I certainly don't wanna see them not be able to use it. So if the rest of the board is voting to waive the fee, I, not much we can.
Can I see that checklist? You ever see this checklist before, Bob? How many years you been here?
I've never.
How many years you been on board? How many years you been on board?
About a year, ten.
Okay, first time I've ever seen it, but I'm only here a year, not yet. Lance, have you ever seen that?
No, I haven't.
Okay. If we want to upgrade this or talk about this, I think we should talk about this. Obviously, not tonight, I promise everyone that's listening. I think we should talk about it at a different time. I think if we wanna set up fees, we should. I've never seen this form before. Someone that's been here for a very long time hasn't seen this form either. I don't wanna enforce something that I didn't even know how it was created. I don't know that I'm in agreeance or disagreeance, because I've never seen it, but that being said.
The only thing I'm gonna add, not to interrupt, is how many people do we actually get that wanna utilize Burger Field besides Little League? I don't really think there's many organizations that are.
Not many, we always charge the fair, yes, we charge the fair.
Right.
Part of our reasoning was, these travel teams really don't have a whole lot of money anyhow, I mean, they're, they're usually on a shoestring type of budget.
Yeah.
If they can afford insurance, which clearly they have to afford, that's, that's, that's a big, right?
That's the one I make concern.
In all honesty, if something happened there, that's really the biggest concern for me. Okay. That being said, can I get a motion to waive the fee for the Orange County Bombers to use the Little League fields primarily on Sundays and one night per week, which they will let us know hopefully when they're gonna use that? And as long as they provide us an insurance certificate.
And it's only during daylight hours.
Yes, and if they need any lights or anything on, they have to come back to us and talk to us about that, and that will be a completely separate decision if we have to, so yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We already had their insurance, by the way.
Perfect.
Fantastic.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the bills? I'm just gonna read these. General, eighteen thousand eighty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. Water, five thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. Fire, fifteen thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. And capital, twenty-two thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars and fifty-one cents.
Make the motion, pay the bills, I read by the mayor.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closing comments. Bob, what do you got?
Congratulations on the reelection of the little trustees, and everybody that participated in it.
Thank you.
Did they go for a while?
Okay. Next up is me.
Yeah, you are.
All right, Brian, what do you got?
The Mount Hope Easter egg is this Sunday?
This Sunday at two o'clock.
Two.
Yeah, if it rains, it's next Saturday, but it's not supposed to rain that day, so I'd be incredible.
It's gonna be cold.
It's, well, if anyone wants to attend and watch kids pick up Easter eggs that quick, that's the time to do it, so you're not gonna be outside that.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Wear gloves.
All right, thanks, that's all I got.
Thanks. Lance, what do you got?
I'm gonna turn my week off next week.
We do?
I'm all good. Think I'm ready for my park committee, we're all set up, and we'll go from there. Anybody else wanna come enjoy the park committee, they can come in, have questions and answers.
If you give me the time and date that you're gonna do it, I'll post something online.
Yeah, well, I know, I, I called a couple, and tried to figure out, I think the mind's going.
Well, it has to be done.
No, no, I tried, I tried to go back first, the committee people first, tried to get an idea of time, they wanna go to something better.
Okay, perfect. Diane, what do you got?
Other than the Easter egg hunt, there is also an Easter egg hunt Saturday, the Lions Club.
Oh.
At the Four H Center, and I don't have the time, but it is on our Facebook page.
Not only was it on Facebook, I actually sent both of them out, constant contact to everyone. I did them separately, so there's no confusion. I actually had the police chief call me today and say, hey, you made a mistake by posting something for Saturday, but the town is having their Easter egg hunt at the town park, and the Four H is having the Otisville Lions Club at their park up the road a little farther, so.
Is there rain date for?
The Otisville Lions, no. There's no rain date, it's not on the sheet. Tara, do you have a rain?
People are asking, I see, I don't see any rain date, and I don't think it's inside.
It's not gonna rain, that's all?
Unfortunately, it's supposed to be.
Can I get a motion?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Right.
Thank you.